The city council meeting will now come to order. We'll have the invocation and pledge by Alderman Anderson.
Dear heavenly God, thank you for bringing us all together yet again to do, we hope, your work. And please, God guard and direct us as we make the decisions of the city. Please be with the men and women who protect us overseas and try to keep them out of arms' way and bring them home safely to our family members. We ask for these things in your name, dear heavenly God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have the special guest and announcements listed, but I have a whole room full of special guests. Thank you very much for being here. The next thing on our agenda is approval of the minutes of January 21st. Do you each have a copy of that in your packet?
Make a motion we approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes of the January 21st city council meeting. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes passed. I have several special comments cards. I have two that are not on the agenda, so we'll take those up right now. The first one is Kevin Corbell.
Good evening.
Write your name in.
Kevin Corbell, 123 Grenoble Circle. In the last council meeting on January 21st, Alderman Mosley read into the record emails from constituents regarding the Maumell property owners' multipurpose improvement District 15, but declined to disclose the name of said constituents. Madam City Attorney, are the names of the individuals who are communicating with an Alderman subject to the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Having that clarification, knowing the high value Alderman Mosley places on openness and transparency, I would like to respectfully submit to you, Madam City Attorney, a FOIA request for your review and to forward to Alderman Mosley.
Thank you very much. The next card I have is Mary Payton.
Hello. I'm Mary Payton. I recently moved to 153 Hibiscus Drive in Maumell, Arkansas. I'm here tonight as one of the three commissioners for Maumell Water Management. And I think that this is kind of a hands-across-the-water talk that I want to deliver to you guys tonight because I want you to know that Maumell Water Management is committed to keeping up with the growing demands of the city of Maumell. We understand, as most of you understand, that growth and expansion is vital to the health of a growing community. We understand that without expansion, growth, and new customers, that the cost of services to our existing customers will become more and more a burden. Environmental cost, cost of meeting government regulations keeps growing on a daily basis. So we have embraced the idea of growth and expansion. We have a service area that is pretty clearly defined and designated, and we will, without exception, work with the city toward meeting the requirements and the demands for expansion and growth in those communities. I have heard, from a couple of you anyway, that you have some concerns about whether MWM will be able to meet the requirements of expansion into the Morgan area and meet the requirements of expansion and growth along our new third entrance and the Crystal Hill expansion. We had just recently, in fact, last week, been asked by the mayor to meet with him and his engineering firm to discuss the possibility of that expansion and growth and what opportunities are there for both the city and MWM in terms of, again, growth and expansion. We are typically not involved in pre-construction meetings. We're typically, Maumell Water Management, that's the way hat I'm wearing right now. Many times, we don't really know of what the requirements may be and of what the city's needs may be until they've already come before you. In the past, I have always tried to keep up with growth and inform the board of the direction that the city will be moving in, in terms of future expansion and growth and new subdivisions, commercial growth, residential and industrial. But we are not going to be able to do that unless someone communicates with us, unless someone will convey to us what those needs are going to be. We believe that we can meet the needs, but we need a partnership in order to be able to address engineering issues, water sources, equipment, and that sort of thing. We haven't had much of a partnership in the past in regard to that. While the city was engaged in your strategic planning, MWM was engaged in engineering studies of our own. Those engineering studies, as most of you know, in fact, I think most of you were there for the presentation by the engineering firm, their report and the information that we received basically at the same time of what kind of requirements we need to be ready for, and, once again, the growth that we need to expect in the future. We have tried very carefully to structure our schedule of improvements to your strategic planning so that we'll be ready when you're ready to address the growing needs of the Some of you, fortunately, for all of us, I think, have taken on the responsibility of familiarizing yourself with Maumell Water Management's operations and the difficulties that we face in maintaining the water rates, which we're particularly proud of. You know, I want to particularly express to Birch Johnson and Preston Lewis and Mark Kelly my appreciation to all of you for attending the meetings and becoming familiar with those operations. That's the kind of cooperative attitude that we all need in order to better serve our And, once again, I want to assure you that MWM intends to provide the water and sewer services to all of those areas within our service area. And, basically, our service area is going to be whatever the city of Maumell dictates. There are those areas that may eventually be outside of our service area. As we grow further to the west and further to the east, we may come upon some conflicts there, but we'll work through those, as we do, and approach them, once again, in a cooperative manner so that we can take care of the needs of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing on my agenda is the financial review, and it's at the second council meeting. The next thing is the -- I'm sorry.
It's quite all right. I think you're doing a fantastic job. I was almost tempted to turn the light off.
I have a tendency to ignore.
That's okay. That's all right.
You have to holler out.
No, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Payton for attending this evening, and indeed, as I joined the council, we were coming off of that summer of 2012 where there had been a considerable amount of angst. And, you know, there was a rather exhaustive effort by this council in the last year to sort of examine some of the statutory situations and everything, and I'm pleased that I was invited and encouraged to attend the meetings on a regular basis. I know Alderman Kelly has been there at almost all of them. Alderman Johnson, you've been there as well, as some of you others have attended as well. I know I've seen Alderman Norris there. And what I have found is that there is a process that is ongoing right now to explore possible changes within their leadership structure and potentially even expand the number of commissioners. But any time you do something like this, you always encounter a myriad of regulatory hurdles in which to cross, and I think that's what they're finding out right now. But rest assured that I will continue to attend those meetings, as I think Alderman Kelly is nodding his head like he will as well, to see that we keep that process going. Because if anything, I think we've learned, at least in the past several years, that some of our best achievements of the city have come when we're all on the same page and pulling on the same rope together. And some of our greatest setbacks have occurred when we're kind of going our different ways. So I'm pleased with the spirit of cooperation and particularly with some of the avenues in which we're looking to grow in Morgan and possibly in the third entrance area. And spoke with General Manager Heller recently regarding some of those sewer issues in those areas, and, you know, there were some challenges here and there regulatory-wise, based on everything they encountered with the EPA and the Health Department, but he did assure me that as long as we continue to communicate with them, they will help us find the answers. So that was good news, because I know we're looking to grow. Thank you.
I had a comment here. As far as if we're going to comment on Mrs. Payton's comments, I wanted to encourage them also to revisit the idea of some type of democratic control of the Water Department by the residents of this community. This is something they refuse to do. And if we're going to cooperate, they need to be showing some good faith in that regard. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I will also say I have several comment cards, but they're on items that are on the agenda, and we'll address those when we come to them. And now, the next thing is a procedural motion. I need to -- a motion for a procedural motion.
So moved. Oh, I move that.
We read all ordinances?
We read all ordinances by title only.
I second that motion.
Motion and a second to read all ordinances by title only. And resolution.
And resolution.
Uh-huh.
Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a bond task force presentation, and I think Mr. Johnson is going to handle that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you again. Craig Johnson, 3 Sierra Valley Cove, Maumell, Arkansas, before you today as the chair of the Bond Task Force Committee. And as most of you attended, very well attended, I think Mr. Kelly was out of town, I promised that my remarks will be a little bit more succinct and a little bit more brief today than they were at the hour-plus meeting, which I thought went really well as far as that goes. So there's just some opening remarks, is that I'm not the expert on all the projects that are presented. There are staff members here in the audience today, and if you have any follow-up questions, I may need to defer those, as there's some intricacies about all the projects, and I don't remember them all. But I did provide a memo to you after eight months of culmination of work. That should be still yet available online, as far as I know, to anybody that wants it. About 20-plus pages of meat, and then the rest is all appendices, all of which have the public comments, or not, excuse me, not public comments, I should say, the comments that was submitted via email are included in that, as well as all the supporting information on all the projects. So with that, I'll go ahead and get going. First off, I need to recognize the folks that assisted me in this effort. You're talking about eight-plus meetings and a lot of commitment and communication. As I mentioned, I am a planning commissioner. I represent Ward Two. My name is Craig Johnson. John Todd, representing Ward One, also planning commissioner. He was the vice chair of the Bond Task Force Committee, is also your chairman of the planning commission. Caleb Norris, your Alderman for Ward Four. He was secretary. Bill Arnold, Ward One. Phil Bullington, Ward Three. Birch Johnson, Alderman, Ward Three. Karen Lamaro, Ward Four. Ms. Timmons, she never is going to tell me her first name. At-large member. And then Victor Warner, Ward Two member. So, and I appreciate their efforts. They worked very, very hard on the task force as well. This is the same agenda that I presented to you. One point of clarification that I think I needed to make, maybe was misconstrued by the Maumell Monitor, is that there was always public comment. The intent was always to provide public comment. I guess perhaps a little bit of confusion. I specifically asked for any of the public comment, to ask for clarifying questions or anything they needed to do as follow-up on any of the items presented. I did not want it to turn into a support and a vote type of atmosphere, and that was my clarification. So, just like anything else, public comments been included. It's up to you this evening, if you want to entertain public comments as part of this process, and at which time, the format that they will be heard. But we're going to go through the purpose and the process, how we developed consensus workshop, what the presentation format was, and then, very succinctly, on the project summaries. And we can get into as much detail as you would like, but I'm going to try to be short with my comments, and then discuss the ranking summary. So, our purpose when the mayor approached me about doing this was to develop a methodology, if you will, to recommend to the city council potential capital improvement projects. The intent is, is that they would be funded under your current property mileage. And there was some debate about, you know, how much that was. Well, we targeted 15 million. It's up to the council on how much money you end up spending. There's not a doubt in my mind that you could obligate more than 15 million if you so elected. The terms of that obviously can come in a myriad of different options for you, so I don't think that there was necessarily an upper limit or lower limit, but we had to pick a range of projects to begin. We initially met on August 20th to establish a protocol. To be able to go through this process, it was very important to me that we were very objective and not subjective through the process, so I adopted a methodology that I've used before on selecting different avenues of projects in my career. And the impetus was that we be objective as possible, impartial, unbiased, and be able to gain consensus among the whole group on which projects ended up moving forward. And we call these critical success factors, and you're going to see the format of that. So, we actually stayed with the mission statement as provide a recommendation to the city council for the consideration of potential capital improvement projects. One, none, all, some, is for you to decide. It wasn't for the bond task force to decide, only potential projects for your consideration. And they would be funded through the current property tax mileage. You have other avenues for funding capital improvement projects, as you will, as you well know, and that can be explained to you. We had a brainstorming session and developed about 25 items. The one thing that I was very strong about is during that workshop, is that we picked items that were definable, and they were also measurable for objectivity. If the two items aren't definable and they aren't measurable, usually they're subjective. And that's why it was important, as we go through those workshops, that we kept objectivity in mind and not be subjective. So, this spreadsheet that you see before you, or what I kind of call the ranking matrix, was an effort that was evolved through all of the projects. And I'm kind of presenting it to you upfront rather than the end, because I think it will make sense as we go through the rest of the projects and for discussion. And I'm actually going to read them a little bit to you, as you can see. But on the left is the actual success factor that was chosen. Again, we're honing down from 25 that were selected to a final of seven. The description, and then a rating scale or a ranking scale, if you will. In this case, the lower the rating, the better off. So, we had a ranking factor that was assigned with the rating scale. So, in this cost, in order of importance, that was selected by the bond task force, was cost, operations and maintenance, the demographic that we served, the economic development impact, if you will, the public services, and then the benefits for Maumell. So, cost is just what it sounds like. It was simpler, just right down the line, based on rating, based upon the cost of the project, with pretty much a midpoint in that $15 million range. The operation and maintenance, so the necessity to perform or fund routine actions which keep a facility working in order for, or, excuse me, for the objective of retaining a level of service or restoring a level of service. Some of the projects are going to be more intensive O&amp;M, some are going to be less. And then the demographic served, the ability through the project to serve the gender, age, and ethnicity of Maumell. The economic development, provide the ability to affect the standard of living in the community or one that can influence a measured change in the economy. For public services, is the impact to public services that are essential to the function and operations for the city and citizens of Maumell. This would be improvements necessary for roads, water, sewer, those types of things. And then, the actual benefit to the Maumell citizens. So, it has the potential to improve the overall health and welfare of the citizens of Maumell, which is actually a component of our mission statement. Now, not going to go into necessarily detail on the rating scale, but, you know, basically, it either has a significant impact, or a modest impact, or no impact at all, and we put a ranking or put a rating scale on that. And then, the only one that's got a monetary is the cost itself. And we didn't assign a cost to O&amp;M. It's either neutral, meaning it had very little O&amp;M impact, all the way to something that's going to be very intensive, additional staff, a funding mechanism on the project or the project itself would require some type of funding or fee mechanism to be able to support it. And then the ranking factor, cost being the least, or cost being the greatest asset considered, and the benefits of Maumell being the least. So, we had a specific meeting format. We had eight meetings, as I suggested. I requested presentations from staff on specific projects that there was needs from. We also requested, through our public format, presentations or inquiries from the public. We provided an agenda for each meeting and let everybody know what was going to be discussed. We provided public comment at the end of each meeting, and we also provided an email address for anybody to be able to utilize, as well as the correspondence between committees. So, tried to be as open and transparent as we possibly could. And through this effort, we submitted a memo for your consideration, January 20th. So, each project presented specifically on these items. I didn't let them vary, because I wanted the same format for each project, so we would have an equal consideration platform for each one. Project description, statement of need, the capital costs, annual O&amp;M, some of these are cost factors. The positive and negative project attributes, of course, the summary wrap-up, questions and clarifications, and then we actually asked the public to comment on the projects. So, I'm going to go through the project summaries. These are going to be much more succinct than what was presented to you before. I wanted to target 10 or 15 minutes, and they'll put up for question and answers, and I'm sure that you're going to take public comment. So, the first project that we're presenting, one thing that I think I should consider is that when we first got going, we didn't know if we would have 20 projects, 25, or 50. So, we didn't know. But we did not cut or eliminate any projects, specifically, the bond task force did not. We did eliminate two projects, which you'll see, but that was at the request of actually staff. It wasn't at the request of the bond task force. So, what you see before you are all the projects that were brought forward. So, whether you take one or all, none, eventually is going to be your decision. And we feel like I had to provide a ranking system just because of the physical responsibility. You know, if you're going to make sure you select a project, I think they're all worthy, they're all worth of merit, but if you select it, I think you have to have an understanding of how much O&amp;M impact, how much does it affect the citizens of Maumell, how much public service or public service is going to be required, water, sewer, so forth, for each separate project, as you go through for your consideration. So, the first project that we'll put forth is the Maumell pedestrian overpass or underpass, whichever way that it may end up being. The mayor brought forth this project, and he was very much in favor of an underpass more than the overpass, because he had done his homework on use. That doesn't necessarily eliminate having an overpass or a bridge-type structure. It really wasn't our job to determine the exact location. There's going to be a lot of opinion on where that needs to go, is really to identify a need, and that was clearly identified, whether that is for opening up an avenue or pedestrian corridor for the schools, which are across the boulevard as compared to where our residential area primarily sits, or to open up an avenue of shared access, now that we have carts or golf carts permitted on city roads and streets under certain conditions, is to be able to have some dual function between recreational use, that being the Country Club of Arkansas and the Maumell Country Club, or any other deemed, anything that's deemed appropriate. And whether that's an underpass or overpass is probably going to rely upon functionality of the highway department in permitting it, which is going to be a pretty tall task. The mayor did specifically ask only for one underpass, not two, although I think two are identified in the strategic plan, and he's asked for a million dollars for the project, very little O&amp;M. And I'm really not presenting these in a way of ranking. I'm really presenting them the way that they were presented to us, if I remember correctly, or to some extent, how they were presented to us as a committee. So, the only O&amp;M you're on a deal is just some general maintenance, ice, you know, removal, as you can see, we have that here over the last couple of days, general overall maintenance. But when you design one type of facility, this, you're talking about a 50-year or plus design life inherently. The next is the Maumell Senior Wellness Center, which is downstairs from this facility. Some of you very well remember on the first bond issuance, I call it the first, not the initial, I guess, '05, '06, you have to apologize about the time period. It was on that, and as relative to some budget juggling and things of that nature, the Wellness Center itself was about half, as far as square footage, if you remember right, from the workshop, and then ended up going downstairs and instead of a different facility. But if you visited that facility, they're very limited on space. We met there last time. Hopefully, if you're not familiar with it, you walk around, but, you know, one bathroom, just from a functionality standpoint, it's about half the size as what their current need is. There was a presentation, just to let you know, there was a presentation, staff is showing an option of kind of remodeling that space downtown or downstairs that was pulled back. They requested us to move forward with the new facility. So, the $4.4 million on the capital cost does include a completely new structure. There was lots of questions on whether where it should be located, and one-story and two-story. Like I say, we didn't get into that regarding a specific location. I'm sure that they have looked into that to some extent and accounted for that in the cost. The O&amp;M of the facility, $30,958, or about $31,000, and additional staffing need of about $12,000. Next project. So, the softball complex expansion. We had a lot of public interest on this project, not to so that any of the rest of them were not deemed with good public interest, but quite a bit of public interest on this project. It's addition of two softball fields at the Diamond Center Softball Complex, and addition of two T-ball, baseball fields at the Diamond Center. The issue is that they're just out of space. Right now, if they're scheduling additional use for the facility, they're putting kids out there about 8:15, they're getting done on 10 o'clock on school nights, and they're just at capacity, if you will. So, this was, has always been planned. It is additional parking as well, too, and they do have the available space there. They're at the existing facility, so as far as any additional property purchase that's not included, the capital cost is a little over $1 million, and then the O&amp;M estimate is $60,000 as well. The city center of the city hall, the entire building, as you know, it's worked well for us, but we've really outgrown it as a city. It's got bad plumbing, the roof leaks, you can see in the corner. So, it's just from a maintenance perspective, a 20-year-plus building, and it's in some need of remodeling. The impetus from the mayor was that we're not going to expand, we're just going to completely remodel the facility. You know, although this is kind of tied to an adjacent project of moving courts up here and doing something with the existing fire station, that was really not on the table of discussion or if and or or situation, but assuming that, obviously, the new station is going to get built, and then the use of that facility is yet to be defined, but the potential of moving courts here and working with council, I think, is something that can be worked out, and the mayor did reinforce that, although he's not here tonight, but I think he would say that that's the case. Minimal amount of additional cost. There already has been some investment in the city with some HVAC, the air conditioners up top, so the intent is, is that even though we're going to be moving walls and moving things around, is that that would be taken into account and that would all be reutilized, not new funds. So, we weren't going to scrap or to have to demo anything that you've put in, say, in the last five to six years, and the mayor did take that under consideration. The next project's the indoor aquatic center. By far, it was probably the most By far, it was the, probably the most we had public input on and public comment on, as far as email traffic and just general support when it was discussed. When the first, when the project went before us, the first time, it had a price tag of about $10 million. And, I was very, personally, as chair, I was very uncomfortable with a project taking 30, or some 75% of the planned revenue base for the entire expenditure of capital projects. So, we, we, I asked the mayor if he, if he would really go back and consider phasing the job, if that would be worthwhile, but minor, you know, he went back and actually took a very, very hard look. So, he came back to us with a total capital cost of 6.3 million, and O&amp;M of 454,000. And by far, it exceeds, from an O&amp;M perspective, a, a, any other project, but the intent is, is from the use of the facility and the fees that would be established, that it would be self-sustaining. That, that is the objective and the goal. There's several people that can, that can talk to that. The one thing that he did is that he reduced the capital, capital cost, but he didn't maintain the same level of an O&amp;M when he brought it back. So, I feel that it is somewhat conservative, and, and there is some professional input still yet that probably can be made, that, that feel like that, that's definitely a recoverable cost from an O&amp;M perspective, but it's still a, a reality of O&amp;M, should you not be able to recover it. The objective is, is that, that, you know, right now, you have a facility that is a seasonal facility. As you know, the, the swim pool's not going to, not being used today, is that this will actually open it up to be a year-round type facility, and actually be a, a full home to a swim team here in Mau Mel, a functional use. We were surprised on the amount of, of public that were actually driving their kids all over the place, and I'm sure that you'll hear from them. So, really, from an identifiable need here locally, there was quite a bit of, of public support from that standpoint, of functional use, that, that I wasn't aware of, that, that swimming is actually a season, is not a seasonal sport, it's, it's, it's all year-round, much like other sports are, are becoming. And, the, the impetus is that, having that function here. It, the, the current cost estimate does have a therapeutic pool in it. There's information in the memo, and details, and section cuts, and, and all, all good information that the mayor provided, but it does have, the therapeutic pool is eight or 12, 10 lanes, somewhere through there, for, for competition. And, of course, and I believe that in, in your packet as well, is, is some functional use that has been identified for that facility. One thing that ended up being very important, and not necessarily that I'm spending more time with this than anything else, but it is the largest capital expenditure and the largest O&amp;M, was the use of, of the appropriate manager, or the manager of the facility, their aquatic facility manager, and being able to, to be identified, and the importance of that person in that role. So, i- if you move forward with that, there is a very, very important staff position that will be, be, have to be filled, and my understanding is, is that they are really the maker, the breaker, the bread and butter, that really make this function, make this facility tick, if you will. The Mau Mel Events Center. Currently, we do not have a, a facility that can have any type of banquet facilities. We could, we could do 300-plus in, in the, in the community center now, but we don't have any type of kitchen facilities or anything like that. There's, there's definitely been an identifiable need. It, or, the existing facility, as small as it is, and as quaint as it is, stays relatively booked, and staff can give you information regarding that, and, in fact, to the point of, of turning away. And what we learned from, through discussions, is that this type of facility is actually looked at from a training basis for industries that come into town. They ask if we have this type of venue, is it available to them, can they have it? And, you know, one parallel that, that I, I drew is that, and I shared with, with council, is that, you know, in Stuttgard, Arkansas, they have a, a phenomenal event center. I don't know how they funded it or anything like that, but it's very, very big. So, that you have a facility that's heavy and industrial, and, and it's, it's very nice. You would not know that you were in Stuttgard, Arkansas, if you walked through that facility. It's, it's class. So, you know, as far as a functional need, in being that, you know, we're 17,000, Stuttgard's 90,000, 10,000, there are facilities in Arkansas, say that to say this, there are facilities in Arkansas that are spending money on this, and, and have a functional need for an event center. This was broken down in two phases. The first phase is, is primarily the banquet or convention center, if you will. The next subsequent phase is actually a theater, for, for to be able to sit about 300 people, about, if I remember right, around 16,000. I, I didn't want to get bogged down in the square footage, as all that information's in your memo, but around 16,000 square foot of total space, and then we have a, a theater for an additional 4.8 or 6.3 million dollars. And, and this is how you would, you know, you'd set it up. I think the intent is, and staff understands that this is too much of a big chunk, and this is actually a phased facility, with phase one being the, the banquet center, if you will, first. And lots of questions, I guess, from you guys on taking in the river, and we had a very good presentation from the, the architect regarding utilizing the facilities, and, and taking in the river, and taking advantage of the, the setting, and I think they, they did the best to be able to maximize that. And Joshua stepped out, and he was going to flip over to the, rank. Here he comes.
Suspense, a building, suspense.
Yeah.
Never that far away.
I knew this, I saw you step, I was like, what is he doing? He's going to flip over. Tried to get this in the PowerPoint, and it just, it didn't look good. So, this is in your packet, and this is actually the project summary. So, you have, you have two things here, what we incorporated, you know, you, you actually have the project description, the summary of the capital costs and O&amp;M, and then you have the raw score with the factors running across, and then, then the weighted score and actually the project rankings on the right-hand side. Tab just a little bit to the right, if you would. So, you can see where the project's rated on a raw without the, the weightings, the factors weighting in, and then you can see them, where they ranked with them. And, and the, the whole impetus of this was to give you an objective measure, and where you go from here is obviously your decision, and, and a tough one at that, because, you know, it wouldn't surprise me if you, you put this out that the citizens wouldn't want each and every project, and I don't know if you want to go fund 25 or 30 million dollars worth of, of money. So, they're, they're all worth the merit. You know, mayor, as far as communicating to us or to the bond, to the, to the bond committee, the, the email is still open. You can still put a question out there. I'll respond. Victor asked a question, and I'm happy to respond and lead that exchange, or if you have any questions, you can obviously, you know, call me or, or call any of us. But, I, I tried to do a good job as far as thoroughly documenting the memo, all the email exchanges that went on as well, up until the time that I submitted it on the 20th, and I, I've not had too, really too much traffic of support that came earlier on in the process. So, with that, I would open it up to any questions that you may have, before you leave the public comment, if you so desire.
Okay.
Very good.
Pardon?
Or would, would we rather have public comment?
I would, I would actually rather have the people who have signed up first, and then let's do additional comment, because some of the questions may be answered in these comment cards. I, I do want to compliment you and the entire Bond Task Force for the excellent job that you've done. You've provided a tremendous amount of information, and we're, we're going to be tasked with deciding what to do with it now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I do have several comment cards on the bond issue, and the first one is Seth Seaton.
My name's Seth Seaton, I live at 602 Tuscan East Circle. I come tonight to make a few comments in regards to the Event Center. First off, I hold a bachelor's and a master's in music education and in performance. I've taught close to about 10 years' worth of influence, both in Mau Mel and outside of Mau Mel. I've worked with the Mau Mel Music Teacher League, as one of the founding members, to try to create a cultural influence here in the city. I am also a citizen soldier, and a father, and a husband, and I love living in Mau Mel. I first came here years ago because of what the community has, the structure of the community, and it's well-kept, and it really brought me here. The Event Center slash possibly a performing arts center, as you mentioned in the second phase in the presentation, is much needed here. Rather than the other options that are on there to be funded, this doesn't just address a need or a modification, this addresses a vacuum. In Mau Mel today, if you, if I wanted my son to go be a basketball player, softball, soccer player, he would have ample opportunities, and which are great opportunities. However, as a music educator, I have to emphasize the fact, as well as, speaking from my constituents, with, I represent my family's music teachers, people that I know that would love to have a place to give private lessons, a public facility that would increase the living value here in Mau Mel. As it stands right now, like I said, there's a big vacuum here, culturally speaking. A few years ago, I tried creating a Mau Mel community band, and we could not find a facility. Trying to create an area where we can get members of the community. We have many members of the community here that were in, in a band at one point in their life, that would like to get involved again. We have plenty of church choirs here. When I taught at, at Academics Plus, I remember having to get the kids on a bus, drive outside of Mau Mel, and go to another church, gracious enough over at Summit Church, to allow us to put on our music, our Christmas concerts and our spring concerts. I would have much rather, you know, for logistics and safety purposes, gone just right down the street here to a possible Mau Mel city-funded public facility. And I'm not trying to water down the, the importance of the other facilities, because we all know any walking places and stoplights in Mau Mel. But, this, like I said, doesn't just address a need, this is, addresses a vacuum, I think, a presence that's not affected here, that's not, excuse me, that's not here. Economically, I mean, there's so, this is multifaceted. We could bring in, such as, I think it was mentioned about trade shows, like they do in Benton with, with the gun show every year. We could actually bring in people outside of the community, bands, concerts, people that would bring in commerce to the local Wendy's and gas stations, and various other, countless other things that would benefit this area. Also, more young professional families to move in here, because they have options to play sports, or have a place to go learn music, or vocal, or visual arts even. From what I heard, there's a lot of things that are not really completely settled yet into the creation of these facilities. And so, maybe we could entertain some different ideas of learning, or, excuse me, classrooms, place where people in the community could come in and learn how to draw. Maybe, you know, it'd be a nutter business venture to bring people into Mau Mel compared to places like North Little Rock and Little Rock, where they have to draw for hours on end, or, you know, have to know somebody. This would be a good place to house something like this for the arts, and for the performing arts, and to, to expand it that way. I thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would, before I go to the next comment card, don't intend to impose time limits on the comments tonight, but please be mindful of the time, because we do have several, and I'm sure there will be additional comments after these are through. My next comment card is Jack Barr.
Good evening. Jack Barr, 128 Mau Mel Valley Drive. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Mau Mel Softball Association. As mentioned earlier, this is a project that is unfinished. We're, we're grateful for what we have, but we would, would like the, the project to be eventually completed. Since its inception, we have had a tremendous amount of growth. We've, we have gone from, from about 120 youth to now over 240. With the adult program, now we're well over 500, and that's 500 participants trying to play on three softball fields. Our concerns are mainly these three things. One's over-capacitation, we certainly are there. Unfortunately, we're having to get to a point now where we're denying players to participate in our league. We just don't have enough room for them. We get to a certain amount of teams, and knowing how many teams we have to, that have to play, we, we just simply can't go over that number of teams anymore. Due to the requirement of those games that we provide each team, like mentioned earlier, the, the games are starting to end later and later in the evening. We're not, we're, we're seeing 11-year-old girls playing ball, you know, past 10 o'clock at night. And, and believe me, as president of the Mau Mel Softball Association, I get a lot of those phone calls and emails from parents. Third thing, with regards to, to our weekend tournaments. A three-field complex is fantastic, but the completion with a five-field complex would provide a tremendous amount of additional economic impact. Last year, we denied 91 softball teams during five spring tournaments. That's 91 softball teams with at least 12 players, parents, grandparents, and so on and so forth. So, you know, use your imagination to find out how many people that we denied into the Mau Mel community. Basically, that's our concerns. One of the things that we would like to ask the council is, how would, how would you like us to respond to you? In other words, how, how would you like the participants to show their support to the council? We don't want to inundate you with a bunch of phone calls and messages and things of that nature, but there is going to be a, a lot of people get behind this, and when we don't, we, we just want to make sure that we do it in a manner that is, is appropriate for you. So, we can do it by email, if you want us to just come to meetings, whatever the case may be, but we want, that's what we want to do. So, if you would please provide the city, you know, Philip Rayburn or the mayor or someone.
I, I would personally think that all of the above.
All of the both.
Any one of them? Okay. Well, I, I remember just the last time we, we did this, I think it was six, seven years ago, the, the, this meeting room was inundated with, with people.
Because social media is so much more prevalent now, you know, that's a good way to contact all of the aldermen, but physical presence is always good.
Very good. Well, listen, we appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next comment card is Jason Redditt.
Jason Redditt, and I'm actually from Little Rock, Arkansas, and I'm the president of Mau Mel Baseball. I'm the only one that was a sucker to take it, I guess. Opened my big mouth when my kid was five, that's how I feel. We have six fields at Mau Mel right now, and, to be honest with you, I do live in Little Rock, and brought my son over here from Bryant. That's where we started out at five, and spent one and a half a season there and came here. You know, you know, looking at economic development, things like that, one of the kids that plays for me is daddy's the principal for Bryant High School. Kids are coming from everywhere to come play at Mau Mel, and the reason why is because y'all built such a good facility, and hopefully, we're trying to run it to the best of our ability. The two fields that we're looking to add, we've already done dirt work. We're, we're sticking money into it, we want to be a part of it, we want to, you know, we can volunteer as much time as we want. We serve about 600 kids in, in spring right now, we're open registration. Fall, about 200 kids, we have 10 travel teams, we put on about five or six tournaments a year that bring in about 100 teams to each one of them. We serve your two Mau Mel high schools right now, they use our fields. But, we are, in the T-ball area, we are booming. We've actually had to lower the age to three this year, three and four, and the reason why is competition. Burns Park down the street, we have to keep up with it. There, they offered it. They're not near as fortunate as we are at Mau Mel, because they don't have the support from North Little Rock that we do have at Mau Mel. We have tremendous support from Philip Rayburn and his crew, I can tell you. They come out there, and we have a tournament, and it rains Friday night, we're ready to play on Saturday morning. Those tournaments fund all of that baseball. People don't understand the leagues, they don't understand, they think that we're making a fortune out there. We don't make any money in the league, very rare, but there's still anywhere from a quarter million to half a million dollars that rolls through that park every year, and lots of responsibility. I always tell everybody, it's the most expensive volunteer job I've ever had. I mean, you know, and a lot of us put a lot of money into that park out of our own pockets. That T, the two T-ball fields that we're working on will, will accommodate T-ball and pitching machine, which now is going to a coach pitch. So, tournament baseball is where everything is going, and what that will do for us is it will get the T-ballers off our fields on the weekends, so we will be able to compete with Conway, Burns Park, for the tournament, for the tournament teams to come in. And quite frankly, T-ball and pitching machine, those tournaments bring in more money to the park than the older age groups. I guess, parents are still married, and, you know, grandparents are still alive and want to see the kids play. I don't know, but they do bring a whole lot more money in. In practice times, I mean, we're, we're already utilizing Swingways Little Field for T-ball practices. I mean, we've been paying them every year to, to put practice on the field. And I've got a, I've got 11-year-olds plays on travel team, and I coach it, and president, and now I've got a three-year-old that's coming through that played this fall, and I'll be coaching him, too. So, we are bringing in tons of money on weekends when those, for those tournaments, and during the week, because these people are driving from Little Rock, Bryant, everywhere else to come play here. And I feel those calls all day long right now during registration of people coming over from across the river. And used to, it was, if you lived in the Little Rock side... And used to, it was, if you lived in the Little Rock side, you had to go to J.D. because of the sanctioning organization. Now that we're U-S-A, it doesn't matter. We can take kids from, we got kids from Conway, Mayflower, everywhere coming to Malmell to play baseball and that, but we are busting at the seams. And so, I, I thank you guys for your time. I mean, I, I don't know how bad you really want all those emails and stuff that, because, I mean, my email list is fifteen hundred deep, you know? I mean, so, um, but we would like the cooperation of the city to help us finish those T-ball fields and get more kids out there. Because if we can get them started at three years old, they'll be there till they're fifteen. So, I thank you for your time and you all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Redditt, thank you for your time, especially coming out here too.
Alderman Kelly, did you have a question specifically for him?
No, no, I think that was left on.
Pardon?
I think the light was left on.
Okay.
I do, Jan, I do have a question specifically.
Okay, Alderman Johnson?
Basically, you made a statement about practice fields and everything. And of course, you know, that's where you're teaching the kids truly how to play baseball. And what could we do, consider for future to get a place, uh, area where we could have ten low-maintenance type fields that the kids could go out and practice at, uh, and everything? The young kids that are coming into T-ball and hey, T-ball, you know, if you're a coach, it frustrates you more than anything because some of them can't throw, can't catch, anything like that.
And that they're great.
But they have to have a place, like I said, just a rough area where we could, uh, get it out and open, where, and maybe just a small backstop. Doesn't have to be anything major for them to practice on to, and everything, just to throw, throwing it out.
I think Joshua Blossom and his soccer group would let us use their field. No, I mean, I recommend kids use the field in the apartment complex right down from Swingway on the way on the right right now. It used to be the old driving range. Um, the owner of that has let teams practice there. We, you know, football field when it's not being utilized. And I only recommend that for the T-ballers because they're not going to tear it up or anything. But pretty much, I mean, when I coached my eleven-year-old back in T-ball, we practiced on Axion's field over across the river. I mean, anywhere I could put them on the field. Now, when you got a pitching machine or something like that, but you have to go in somewhere, it runs a little bit different. But, um, but anywhere you can put a base down.
There you go.
Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to ask, do you have any statistics or can you get some statistics on how, you know, you're from Little Rock and you talked about people coming from Conway to play here in Malmell. Uh, do you have statistics on how many are kids that actually live in Malmell versus those that live outside of Malmell?
I can pull it. I mean, because we give Malmell residents a price break for being in ZipCo seven-two-two, or seven-two-one-one-three, um, they get a price break. So, I can go and pull who's resident, who's non-resident. Um, that's pretty easy.
Do, do you have to turn away any Malmell residents in, uh?
We don't turn away anybody.
Don't turn away anybody?
I take T-ballers or anybody that doesn't have to be drafted to a league, I take them up even at right after the league starts just because in my opinion, you know, just put them on the field. Uh, there's no score kept in four, five, and six. So, three, four, five, and six now. But, uh, as long as we can get them out there and get them started, and that's the whole key is to get them started in Malmell, they won't boo. You know, so.
Well, one other quick question. Does the, do the sports groups share facilities by any chance? Soccer, uh, you know, when they're not playing, baseball play over there or vice versa? Can the soccer players play over there?
I don't know very many in soccer besides Joshua, but I do the football because my son's playing Malmell Purple Wildcats up until now going to school. But, uh, we have an agreement right now with Burns Park. Burns Park takes our overflow. Um, we want to work with Jack and them, the question can, they got tournaments going too a lot of times. But there's a problem there because Burns Park and North Little Rock, they're not getting along. I mean, the board from Burns Park Baseball and, and the city council from North Little Rock have been fighting back and forth. I heard their tournament's got canceled. Now they're back on again and missing that. But, um, we overflow that park. I mean, when we have a tournament, we put out about a hundred teams.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Redditt. Uh, the next comment card is Phil Bullington.
Good evening. Phil Bullington for Blue Mountain Cove here in Malmell. And I wanted to just have a little chat about the Aquatic Center. Just lay down a couple of, it's no surprise that I like, I like water. Uh, and it's been kind of a long road, uh, that we've gone through for well over a year, going on two years now. And looking at, at the cities around central Arkansas that do have these year-round aquatic centers. We started out in England, Arkansas, then Heber Springs, Clarkville, Cersei, Jacksonville, Bryant, Paragool, Conway, Sherwood, North Little Rock, Little Rock, Cabinet, Lowenoe, Eldorado, and Russellville. Um, it's easier to kind of look around central Arkansas and say, which city does not have an indoor aquatic center? Uh, my, uh, charge on the Bond Task Force was demographics. Who will benefit from using this, um, this indoor aquatic center? And it goes literally from cradle to can you walk into the facility? Um, babies are starting now at three months old who are not a swim to be, to be able to be competent and to reduce the risk of drowning. Uh, it goes through, all through, it, it was, it was very difficult because last Monday night when we had our task force meeting, the Mala High School swim team was present. However, they were only there for thirty minutes as they had to get onto a bus and be bussed down to Little Rock where they could practice Monday evening. Um, I would, I would really like to, to see this aquatic center in Malmell, not only for the benefit of the children, but for the benefit of young adults, uh, and from the, from the, the, the very active to the infirm. Um, the way the center is, is proposed, it'll suit the needs from, from, uh, all of the, the demographics of Malmell. There is a stumbling block and it's one that I say that I am perplexed and I don't understand, and that is the O and M of four hundred and fifty, or yeah, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And I, one of my, one of our, um, visits, site visits was to Bryant. And I met, uh, Onat Turdek, who is the coordinator. He swam professionally for the Turkish National Swim Team and he holds a bachelor's degree in business from U.C.A. Uh, he is, is what has made Bryant so successful. So successful that they are now starting to build the second aquatic center because they're turning away too many people. I sent, um, Onat an, an email and I'll, I'll just read it to you and I have a copy for you for your own records. I said, "Onat, I wanted to drop you a line. First, to thank you once again for the information and your hospitality with our visits to your facility. We've had several people from Malmell go down." Uh, the aquatic center, referring to ours, uh, price has gone from ten million, I said nine, down to six million dollars and has made it through the Bond Task Force. It will be presented to the Malmell City Council this Monday night, tonight. The main stumbling block that I see now is the cost of O and M. The figure that we have been given is four hundred and fifty K. I went on to ask, uh, Onat if he knew if the engineering, uh, firm, uh, ETC that has done the proposal here would have any more insight into how this O and M, uh, is, is calculated? Are there other ways of lowering the O and M? Um, Onat replied, "Phil, the engineers won't have the numbers. I hope they can prove me wrong." Um, our aquatic facility, O and M, is around two hundred thousand a year, including salaries. So, it, it begs to, to, to me to make sure that the council, when you're doing, making your decisions and you're looking into the worthwhile projects, that if you go to any one of these fifteen cities, are they all paying four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, O and M, on their, on their aquatic facilities? Or indeed, are they doing something different, something we haven't thought of? Um, what's, what's different? What's, you know, because you're looking at quarter of a million dollar variance between these two figures. Uh, and the Bryant facility, the only thing that I could see that was different is it doesn't have air conditioning. And if it costs a quarter million dollars to air condition in the summer, I want to go to work for energy. Thank you for your time and I'll leave these with you, Mr. Mosley, if you would pass those around.
Thank you, Mr. Bullington.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Alderman Johnson?
Yes, I, I would have one question.
Neil?
Phil. When, when he made that statement, was, I wonder if he was talking, was he talking about net of what the people, you know, see, there's a membership fee to the aquatic center. I wonder if he was talking net or was he talking total?
He's talking his budget. This is what the, what the city council has given him. Uh, that's including his salaries. Now, I didn't want to proceed further, but since you asked the question, Alderman Johnson, um, the facility in Bryant has been revenue positive for years. They're returning a, a, you can't say the word profit, can you, to the city? But they're returning dollars to the city. Um, and I think-
That's what I'm really asking you.
That's, I think, I think with the effective management, Onat has proven that he is able to go out and solicit customers. It's not just selling memberships to, um, the citizens, but it's going out and soliciting customers to come and have swim meets, um, with all the ancillary things. They're paying for this. They're paying for time to swim, uh, after hours, during hours. They're virtually a seven-day-a-week facility, twelve hours a day. Um, and the, he said that the biggest and most discouraging thing to him was saying no. Like, "I'm sorry, I can't take another league. I can't take another tournament because we're out of space." So, that's why they're, they're moving towards the second, now indoor aquatic facility. They have two outdoor facilities, like, like, similar to the one we have, um, at the Jess Odom Center. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very much.
Just a minute. Alderman Lewis?
I don't have a question. Um, just a follow-up and sort of a cautionary statement. Now, I will say, uh, Mr. Bullington, I will be, uh, I've put a lot of thought into this issue and I will be communicating more on it very soon. I'm hoping to, uh, speak to the Malmell Youth Council. Uh, I'd like to get the input from some of our younger citizens out there about what their future hopes and aspirations will be. And I have a feeling they'll be very positive about the pool. But one word of caution when referencing the city of Bryant right now is to put into perspective some of the things that have been coming out down there recently pertaining to some budget battles. Uh, they had to pass a eleventh-hour budget on a four-to-four vote with the mayor breaking the tie. The mayor there received a vote of no confidence. And so, there are some big question marks right now related to budget issues in that city. Now, how much of that has to do with perhaps the indoor aquatic center? That's difficult to say at this point. But there are some major things there. And I know that Mayor Dabs was very aggressive about the indoor aquatic center as well. And so, until some of the dust settles there, I would be a little cautious about, you know, using Bryant as an example. Now, the gentleman which you referenced, um, that's their aquatics director, I think he is doing a fantastic job, it sounds like, based on the participation that they're getting. And that's positive enough. But just wanted to add that little bit of caution in there to, uh, uh, kind of give a full perspective on this discussion.
Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate that, Alderman Lewis. And I will, uh, also take that into advice and perhaps forward to you and the other members of the council, some of the cities that we've visited, so that it might make it a little bit easier for you to make contact and find out what's different.
That certainly would be helpful.
What is different.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. My next comment card is Victor Warner.
Victor Warner, seven Leisure Wood Lane. I'm here to talk in support of the event center. I was part of the bond committee and thanks to Craig especially for keeping us all on task. That was a challenge at times. Uh, first of all, we have an excellent location for the event center, a park on the river. Uh, some of the things we talked about, of course, was an event center with glass windows so we could take advantage of that wonderful view that we have. But just having a wonderful place is not enough if it doesn't pay for itself. As was mentioned earlier, we have, uh, different trade shows, different event shows that are going other places. They're being held right now that could come here to Malmell. Anytime you can bring in outside revenue to pay for a facility that you have, it's always a good thing rather than putting a tax on the people. And an event center would bring in a considerable amount of outside folks with gun shows, flower shows, art shows. As was mentioned about the performing arts addition also, is having a place for our children to be exposed to artistic events where they don't have to go all the way into Little Rock. Right now, the children in Malmell to participate in orchestra or band events or even to view them have to go outside of Malmell somewhere else. And, uh, parents, as busy as they are, and many of us working outside of Malmell, by the time we get home, we don't always want to leave again and go back into town with our children. So, having an art center, having a place for our children to experience the arts right here in Malmell would be an excellent thing to do. The other thing with the art center, with the expansion of, uh, the grounds and the area there is arts and music camps, summer camps, where children from not only our area, but again, from outside of the area could come to Malmell to participate in a multi-day camp. We have the hotel, the Hampton Inn right close there that they could stay at and then participate, uh, in the camps. Some people have said when they talk about an advanced center and a performing arts center is, gee, why can't we just use the high school? Well, first of all, the high school is huge. And the other thing is it's been very difficult for organizations to deal with the school system and trying to get time in, in that place. We've, as, uh, also as board president and director of the Malmell Players, we've occasionally had conversations with the school about performing there. And it would, uh, it would just be too, too difficult. So, having a smaller venue that doesn't have the, the twelve-hundred seats. As far as the event center as well, we have an excellent opportunity in Malmell coming up with, uh, celebrity attractions and the Arkansas Symphony, bringing some of their events as the Robinson Center Auditorium is undergoing renovation, of introducing our community to more artistic events. Having that happen there and then hopefully having an event center soon thereafter, we'd be able to capture some of that interest in the event center. Uh, last thing then is not wanting to encourage an adversarial relationship with North Little Rock, but if we don't build one in this area, they will. And the, the boulevard is already owned by North Little Rock pretty much. And having a presence in a little part of the boulevard would probably be very helpful to Malmell. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. My last comment card is from Nancy Swinkhouse.
Hello. By now, you all must be tired of me coming here and saying about the aquatic center. But I'm very passionate about it because my husband worked down UAMS and Veteran Hospital. And every time people come there, they ask where they should live. I say Malmell. And then, you know, Malmell is a very pretty city, very safe and very good for kids and things like that. And the aquatic center would be a good thing for us, not only for us as Malmell residents, but like in Morgan, Marche, and everybody there. They don't have anything. They have to come here. And a lot of us have to go to the hotel and pay them some money to take, to use the pool and things like that. I'm one of the person who go to Bryant. And Bryant, with all of the long hour and everything, they don't spend four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for running it. They spend a lot less than that. And one of the things I think they do it is that there is time when the kids are there, then they need a lifeguard. But then, like most of the hotel, you know, when all the people come there, they don't have a lifeguard. have a lifeguard. They just have a person who check people in, and in case some problem happen, they can come out and help. See, like, if you swim lap, you know, you don't need a lifeguard. And that is good for you, that is good for my husband, that is good for anybody who work, because by the time they come home, they have no place to exercise there. And swimming is good for everybody, even when you can hardly walk. You know, I walk a lot, but sometimes you cannot walk, sometimes you cannot run. So what do you do for exercise? You have to use the pool. So I just hope that the council think of all of that before making the decision to put it on the voter for voting. And like Mr. Phil said, you know, everybody else, like the high school swim team, like in Bryant, they teach all of their elementary school for free how to swim, because they have all the time, so they teach them how to swim. So that is a good thing. And if the kids go, then the parents have to go, so that is another source of income right there. And I just came back from a celebration of the Vietnamese, I'm Vietnamese, and I just came back from a celebration of, at the Bishop Park where the swim thing is in Bryant. And the Vietnamese community ran the place and have the Lunar New Year's celebration, which is huge. And I bet they bring money into, on that thing too, and many other things. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's the last comment card I have on the task force presentation. And now I believe if Mr. Johnson, if anyone has questions for Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Kelly?
I would like to thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to thank you and the task force for doing an excellent job. I actually have read your memo twice.
Probably caught a few tapos.
I listened to you last week via telephone for an hour and a half during the presentation. I missed the public comment, that meant a lot, hearing the public comment tonight. But you did an excellent job. I really like the methodology you used to break out the projects.
Thank you.
And we have our work cut out for us.
Yes, you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Madam Protem. Mr. Johnson, I noticed in the packet that we received there in the addendum, and I'm talking about the Aquatic Center.
Yes, sir.
There are two pages here. One is an estimate, a preliminary estimate of the construction cost of the facility. The second is an operation projection. I assume they're talking about all expenses necessary to run the facility. Where, first question, and I won't have two or three here. First question is, where did these numbers come from?
To my knowledge, in America, definitely defend himself better, he's out of the country. But that came primarily from the first consultant, of which I don't remember whom that was. And it was, I don't think that there was an exhaustive effort to any extent to, what Phil was mentioning earlier, is to draw any comparison between communities. You know, at a preliminary stage in this, I think, if you will, there were, there's scales of economy, if you will, of similar facilities. And although not definitive, but my assumption is, is those were applied here at this stage. And then as more effort, as you move through the process of engineering and planning, and as more effort, then those can become more definitive as you move through. So I would say, just from my experience, that those would be economies of similar scale at this point. And whether, you know, what has came back and been proposed is more of an open-air facility, whether it was, where HVAC was air-conditioned or not, the mayor would need to answer that for sure. But keep in mind is that the O and M numbers presented did not change. He stayed with the conservative estimate. And he, I think that he would reflect that and reinforce that too as well, and I tried to bring that forth in the presentation as well.
Am I correct in assuming that these are the only numbers that we have with respect to construction costs and operating expenses?
At this time.
Okay.
It was at the one, it was at the information that was provided to us that we further ranked the project. I don't know, I'd have to go back and look. For instance, if it was 200, for instance, if it was $250,000 for sake of discussion, I don't know that it would rank any different.
I think Mr. Rayburn may have something to add to that as well.
I believe the mayor got the first numbers from Larkin Aquatics who built the Aquatic Center, who also built the water.
Okay, now that's the construction cost?
No, that I have to go back and look at, but I know they gave us the first numbers.
The first round of cost estimate, now, in the nine or 10 million range, which I don't think included in your packet, and then when the mayor spent some engineering time going back with ETC to be more refined, as far as on the capital side. I don't know how much time was spent on the O and M side.
Also though, the first concept, the Aquatic Center was actually constructed in the second water stand.
I think at this point, I'm going to make a statement, and it may be that it, I will be asking you to do a little more work with your bond task force. I don't know.
I think we're through, aren't we?
I believe you are. You've done your part.
But I have to give a preface to that.
Sure.
I heard what Mr. Bullington said, and I agree. $455,000 is a lot of money for operating expenses. And one of my biggest concerns all the way through this discussion has been almost a half a million dollars a year in operating expenses. Now, for years, I've watched the budget process go on here in Maumell, and we're very protective to stay in the black.
Yep, and you did a good job with that, ma'am.
And every year, it seems like we come into the budget process upside down. And thanks to our department heads, thanks to the mayor, thanks to staff, thanks to city council, between all of us, we've been able to manage to pull that down to a reasonable level and keep us in the black. Now, for us, I would hate to have seen us this year if we had an additional $455,000 that we had to try to budget in. And I've heard and used the term "budget buster," okay? Now, all that being said, I work with financial statements for a lot of, including large corporations. It's just part of what I do for living. And one of the things, when I'm exploring their operation, is I ask them for three years' worth of operating statements. If we're talking about proposed construction, then they're called pro formas. And a pro forma, for those that don't know, are projected operating statements for that business. Okay? This is not a pro forma. Now, for me to vote yes towards an aquatic center, the first step in getting that yes for me is I would like to see some sort of pro forma, three-year projection, three-years' worth of pro forma on this facility. Because I don't want us to come back next year and get, or the year after this thing gets built, and we get slapped with a half a million dollars of operating expenses. The only way that I know to best ensure that doesn't happen is to have the pro formas right up front. Now, back to you. I don't know whether that's a job for the bond task force committee?
Well, I would think that staff will be more qualified to be able to assist through that. And there was lots of discussion, extensive discussion on this pro forma, and lack of a better term, and how you would recover your O and M cost. What would your projection be, participation be? How could you recover it? When you're talking about $450,000, and Mr. Bullington makes a comment, you know, I'm very cautious of blanket O and M or just statements. I want to see what's behind the number. So if they're budgeting $200,000, perhaps that their pro forma, if you will, for the last two to three years, if he was projecting, it has some type of offset in there, meaning that he's charging fees, obviously, for that, and to be able to offset it. And if they're in the black, obviously, that their projections are short to some extent. And, you know, I don't know necessarily if his budget, how his budget is compiled or questioned. But I think your staff, as well as, Karen's not here, who's a member of our, I mean, she's very well-versed in that too. That's what business she's in. And I think that if staff needed any type of input with that, they can come back and ask us, and we can provide information. And that was some of the question, that Karen did provide, an example of a program, if you will, and I think you could do some projections off that. But I think you have to be cautious to some extent. And then that, anything that would be, bring in would reduce that number. The $450,000, as I understand it was presented, is, I guess you'd say gross, it's not net. So that is your gross cost to you to operate at the facility. That's not net, as far as any offsetting, from the financial standpoint, fees or charges that you would use the facility.
Well, and of course, and I'm going to state what you just did in a little, in a different way. The pro forma is basically income, anticipated income, and anticipated expenses. And they should be, if properly done, they should be broken down, categorized, and supported. And then we'll have a better feel for what it's really going to cost us, instead of saying, "Well, Joe Blow over here said it's only a couple hundred thousand."
You may have a better effort in determining what that is versus what the true actual O and Ms, to give you a sense of comfort that you'll have a sensible, some sensible balance between the two. Just because the anomalies, you know, if you're looking at O and Ms from them, they should be able to provide chemical costs, electrical costs, and things like that. And it should be definitive, should be very definitive. So if it's costing them $200,000, then he should be able to provide some type of backup to be able to demonstrate that.
Well, of course. And I'm also real curious about the income side, because you hit the key word, net. Okay? It's not gross, it's net. And I'd like to see, I mean, do we have to have 6,000 Maumell residents signed up with memberships in this facility to break even? I don't know. That's why I'd like to see.
There were statements made during our meeting, and, you know, and I was very focused on, we need to present what the actual, what would be the actual true cost. And we're not here to project how many people's going to come and offset it. And this is your true O and M. And then for staff to come back, or whomever to come back and assign what they expect as an expected revenue should be something that you should look into a little bit more.
I agree.
Alderman Lewis?
I think this is the jumping off point here, where we sort of take the ball and we accept the handoff and start marching down the field. You have done a terrific job, and I sort of look at this as if you were like a realtor. You have driven by the house, you've gotten a picture of it, you have the square footage, you have the amenities, you have told us what it costs, and perhaps even a plan for, you know, scaling and that kind of thing on some of these projects. And with all of them, except maybe with the exception of maybe one or two, the ballparks being one of them, it will take a good deal more study on our parts. And I think that's where staff can certainly help us, and will, and we can get a closer picture as we go forward. Now, when it comes to going forward, I think this is one thing that would be good tonight. I don't think we need it in the form of any official action. However, we have discussed the possibility of doing a survey. And what I would suggest is perhaps if Clerk Clausen can visit with the mayor when he returns from his trip, that we would like to have a potential draft of what the survey would look like, and in addition, an estimate cost as to what we need to appropriate for the budget in order to send these out to the people of Maumell. So that's what I would recommend. I don't know if there's a consensus amongst us, but certainly welcome any comments or questions from any of the other Aldermen.
Alderman Norris, did you just get tired of waiting? Your question got answered.
Craig answered the question that I was going to-
Okay.
Yeah, don't take my facetiousness as tongue-in-cheek. I mean, I've really enjoyed the process, I have, and I'm here to continue to serve. But at some point in time, you've got to take the ball, I think that's a good analogy, and move forward with it, in whatever form that is.
Alderman Johnson?
Just one quick to the projections and everything, to the extent that if you're dealing with private businesses, there's a whole different projection element there that doesn't reflect at a city. Basically, they're making a projection based on making a profit, which would include depreciation and everything else, which, you know, makes logical sense. But a city has rights that a private business doesn't have. They have the right to get the people to say, "Okay, we'll fund the income," you know, and everything like that. So there's, I know exactly where you come from, I've done a million of them, what you're talking about, and everything like that. But there, when you're dealing with a city, there are other ways to do some things and increase the income and everything like that. So, you know, it's just another side of it that we have, or the people have, if they want it, that they can do it. You know, if we don't, we can't fund it, and the people say, "We want it," then are they willing to pay? So, you know, it's, it's two different animals, but yes, they're both good projections, but the people control ours and what we do with it. That's just my opinion.
Alderman Losley?
Yeah, one is, before we really go too far either, you sending out surveys and that sort of thing, I'm going to be asking the mayor what other possible big-ticket items are going to be coming up in the next 10 years we're going to face for needing money. I would hate to put $15 million on the thing, only to find out in a year from now, we've got approval for a third entrance, but yet we have to come up with $15 million as our, you know. I campaigned on keeping taxes and spending low, and I, you know, if we mortgage up some more and we get something like that, we'll have to raise taxes somewhere else. And we just, we really need to take a hard look to see even if anything, adding anything's feasible here. But anyway, just so I make that point. Thank you.
Alderman Anderson?
I just want to remind everybody that we're actually deciding whether we're going to put this on a ballot. We're not actually deciding whether we're going to pay for this. We ultimately are, it's just like Alderman Johnson said, we're ultimately representing the people of Maumell. So I think it would be a great idea for us to at least move forward with the survey and, you know, get a really good idea of what amount of people really want for each one of these projects. We've got all the statistics now, we've got all of, well, you know, pretty good projections of what the operating expenses are going to be. But we also need to know what does Maumell want? You know, what is important to them? And then we, all we do is decide whether it gets put on the ballot. And then they'll decide which ones are going to be funded. So I just wanted to kind of remind us that to stay on task, that we're actually just deciding to put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I agree with it, we need to move forward with some sort of survey, so the citizens of Maumell can tell us what they want. Any more questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Comment. I agree with Alderman Lewis. Well, I agree with everything's been said here. But, and I agree with doing a survey, but I see that as a different topic from what I'm talking about. Okay? And I'm not talking about a for-profit business here. I'm talking about a pro forma that shows projected incomes, projected expenses. If, for example, we do a legitimate three-year of pro formas, and we find that it is in fact going to cost us net expenses of, pick a number, and I'm going to exaggerate to make my point, $350,000, we can only cover $100,000 of it. At that point, do we really want to push to put that into our budget? Now, I also understand, everything that we do is in benefit of the citizens. And I would be the first one to say is, if it does get on the ballot and the citizens say yes, I don't care what it costs, that's their right, and we should do it. Okay? No argument there. But before we turn out a survey, we need some actual, or some actual numbers, and those need to be publicized, so the citizens also know what we're doing here. Okay? I think we're flying in the dark on our money right now. I don't particularly, and this is no, no reflection on the bond task force, I think they've done a great job. But I have no confidence in these numbers. I don't know where they came from, I don't know what the income's going to be. And I really think it's important, before we proceed on with the survey, that we collect this information and get it distributed to the people, then do our survey, put it out there, and let them make the decision. Okay? That's all I'm saying.
Alderman Johnson?
But, my opinion, if the people say, "That's what I want," are you willing to pay a- But, my opinion, if the people say, that's what I want, are you willing to pay a quarter percent sales tax in your community to fund it? And if they say yes, hey, man, buy into it. Hey, now, if they say no, we're not willing to fund it, then you can't spend it if you don't have it, you know, one of those situations. So there, there are alternatives that the people can pick up on and say, hey, we're willing to do this. And I agree with you, we need to know whether it's 450 or 200, because it makes a big difference. But, and you know, whether or not we can. But it's still their final decision to say, this is the way we want you to go and we would be more than willing to fund it this way. You know, that's just my opinion. But, and I got carried away and wasn't as good as I could have been on the committee because I was all absorbed in that, just get the people what they want and everything like that. And I actually had words and I, you know, I would like to apologize to Craig because of, he did a heck of a job and he, he kept it on. And I think, and he finally told me, said, well, if y'all, if y'all want to poll the people, y'all poll them. Said, we getting all the information on the projects and putting it in. And, you know, and I disagreed with him at the time, but he stayed with, with what he thought. And I tell you what, I hadn't seen anything better than that. And the people, you know, hopefully, we poll them and they say they want it, then are they willing to fund it? We may sit down and look at it and say, boy, these costs are wrong, you know, it's, it's 450, it might be 500, who knows? But if we get our estimate, then we might add on, if you want this project, would you be willing to have an increase in, and I'll say quarter percent sales tax? Hey, other communities have done it four, five, six times this year, if that's what the people want. Now, if we got excess, you know, I have a problem where we looking at remodeling City Hall and we have $5 million in reserve. If City Hall had needed redone, we should already use some of that money by private financing, if we had to, to do it. You know, we're talking something brand new. Hey, some of these projects are existing things or added things and everything like that. And they, I think they have a different weight. And hey, I, if somebody said, we need to take a million dollars out of the fund to buy an air conditioner for City Hall, I'd be all for it. I wouldn't be here trying to get a survey for that. And, you know, if, matter of fact, that's our responsibility to keep City Hall looking the way it should look and up to date, we're, we're proud of it and everything like that. These things are new and that's, to me, it's a little bit different ballgame. And, and hey, the lights, when we did it around, around Odom, we financed it. We said, we're going to put lights out there. We could have gone to the people and asked them for a vote. Well, this was something the people really needed and everything like that, but we didn't do a bond issue, we financed it separate. Some of these projects could be financed separately and could be paid for, some of the small projects, I'm saying.
We could probably address some of that later. You know, I've got a couple more lights I want to, but it's 7:30, we've got a large agenda still to go through and we've got a lot of time that we can talk about this. I'd really like for us to finish up, move on. Alderman Norris, you're next.
I just wanted to really quickly clarify that the, the role of the Bond Task Force Committee was not to put together the programs or to do the, a lot of the independent research. The projects were put together by either city, you know, departments in the city or, and I believe it was open to special interest groups or just people that had a project they wanted to put together. They then brought it to the committee who reviewed it and sort of put it through some objective criteria to see how it would come out on the other end. And I'm just clarifying that less folks think that the Bond Task Force Committee chose the projects or did a serious amount of independent research past what was presented. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mosley?
I'm going to pass.
Okay. Clerk Clausen?
Yeah, I was just going to note that, I mean, certainly Mayor Watson can speak more to the numbers that, that were provided there for MNO. Certainly, we can give a more detailed, clearer picture as we get down the road. That should not be difficult to come up with. But Mr. Rayburn pointed out that total operating for the outdoor pool, which is, you know, not the same thing, but just for those three months in 2012 was $213,000. That's for a couple of months at, at the pool. Different operation, but, I mean, we can get these kind of numbers and get specific. We can look more at other facilities, yada, 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 but probably not going to settle that issue tonight.
All right, let's move into the, the regular agenda then. Second reading of ordinance number 839.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Malmell County, Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 839, an ordinance amending park hours for city parks in the City of Malmell and for other purposes.
Okay, that's second reading, there's no action required on that tonight. We'll have the second reading of ordinance 840.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Malmell County, Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 840, an ordinance amending the provisions governing placement of permanent subdivision signs in residential zones or residential uses in the City of Malmell and for other purposes. Can't close the door.
I know. He's taking care of that.
That's also a second reading and there's no action required on that tonight unless there are questions. Second reading of ordinance 841.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Malmell County, Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 841, an ordinance to appoint municipal multipurpose property owners improvement district commissioners to municipal multipurpose property owners improvement district number 12 of Arkansas and for other purposes.
Okay. That again was second reading, will be on third reading at next council meeting. We'll move to new business, ordinance 842, we'll have the first reading.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Malmell County, Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 842, an ordinance amending the master street plan for the City of Malmell, Arkansas and for other purposes.
That'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting if there are no questions. Next, we have resolution number 2014-03 regarding surplus property.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Malmell, Pulaski County, Arkansas, resolution number 2014-03, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
Make a motion, we approve resolution 2014-03.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second to approve resolution 2014-03. Are there any comments or questions? Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I was just wondering if anybody can tell us how much a Kawasaki mule does cost new, and I assume these are going to be trade-ins.
Correct. Mr. Rayburn?
Mr. Rayburn? He asked, can you tell us what a mule costs new? And also, he assumes this will be a trade-in?
Yes, we are looking at trading in and a mule's going to be around $9,000.
A little over. Is this in the budget for this?
Yes, it was in my capital budget, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution number 2014-03.
Oh, four.
Oh, four, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Malmell, Pulaski County, Arkansas, resolution number 2014-04, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
Make a motion, we approve resolution 2014-04.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve resolution 2014-04. Any comments or questions? Mosley?
Yes, again, basically the same questions. Interested in what a new tractor costs and is it in the budget for this coming year?
Yes, it was in the budget. We budgeted 20, no, excuse me, yeah, $28,000 for the tractor. It's also has a front-end bucket on it and we are looking at doing a trade-in and it's already about double what we thought we would get on a trade-in for a 98 tractor, about $4,500 is what we've got an estimate on.
Are these, is the current tractor pretty well worn out?
Yes, sir. It's a 1998 model that's been very heavily used.
Wouldn't behoove us to keep it around and have...
No, sir. And plus, the, we believe the transmission is close to going out and that would take up most of that cost in repair.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, all those in favor of resolution 2014-04, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution 2014-05, expressing support for Academics Plus Charter School.
Let me read it first.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Malmell County, Pulaski, State of Arkansas, resolution to be entitled, resolution number 2014-05, resolution in support of the Academics Plus Charter School in the City of Malmell and for other purposes.
I move we approve it.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second for resolution 2014-05. Mr. McGill, did you want to speak to that?
Rob McGill, Executive Director, Academics Plus, 900 Edgewood. Just that we appreciate the city and everything that you've done for us, whether it's parks, whether it's the community center, every, just a lot of support and appreciate your support tonight. We're trying to go another 200 students over the next two years to allow more students to be able to use our facilities. And we have facilities to do it, so thank you very much. Any questions?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Do you need, would it help if all of us went to the state meeting?
Be very helpful if you're there. I don't know how helpful, but I'd love to see you there. It's February 19th at 8:30 and after the consent agenda, we're first on the agenda. So it should be immediately after that.
Alderman Mosley?
I assume this resolution is just a show of our support that we think it's doing well and that we're not, we're not on the obligated for anything, monitored.
We're not obligating ourselves for anything, we're just saying we support them.
A little bit, just a tiny bit of history on that is when Lisa Academy Charter School went for a cap increase, they didn't have support of the city of Little Rock and there was issues. So this is, this will let the panel know that the city does support the growth.
That we think you're doing a good job and think you're in a position well.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Anderson?
Well, I was just going to ask, you already answered the question, if we were going to be, if we did want to come and show support, if, if we needed to sit through the four-hour class meeting.
No, we should be first. That's one problem with having academics as your name, is it starts with an A, so they get to hit me on everything they want to hit on.
So do you, how do you feel about this next meeting? I know that they've...
Well, next year, we go before the board to get our, not our renewal. I'm 100% sure on renewal that we're good. As far as cap increase, you know, that could go either way. Just, we do have opposition from Pulaski County Special School District, but as far as, I think we're in a good position. We're in a stronger position now than we were three years ago with our test scores, our finances are in great order, just a lot of strengths that we didn't have three years ago when we went before the same board.
I'm absolutely in favor in helping you in any way. I mean, I think it's one of our jewels to have that school.
And also Keith Robinson is a board member, a city-appointed board member, he's here too tonight, so appreciate him being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think the letter is coming around and I guess, does that need to come back to you, Clerk Clausen, or will that go to, okay, it'll come back here. Okay, we have resolution 2014-05. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes or resolution passes? There you go. Thank you very much. Resolution 2014-06 regarding street fund budget, or street fund, yeah, street fund budget.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Malmell County, Pulaski, State of Arkansas, resolution to be entitled, resolution number 2014-06, a resolution in support of the use of grant funds and additional funds for the implementation of CNG fuel usage by the Central Arkansas Transit Authority, amending the budget to provide funding for the same and for other purposes.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance 2014-06, or, excuse me, resolution. Make a motion, we approve resolution 2014-06.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Norris?
Yeah, I had a question about, I guess it's paragraph five of the preamble. I hate going into that since we know that it doesn't mean much, but that first sentence seems to contradict directly what the mayor had said previously was, which, was that the city did not commit the $9,500, but rather committed to look at it if everyone else had gone along with that. Does that sound familiar to anyone else?
We did not commit and they are not asking for $9,000.
Correct, but I was just saying that the whereas says, whereas the City of Malmell previously committed $9,500 roughly toward the tiger grant submittal, which I think the mayor said we didn't do.
Do you want to speak to that?
Well, I mean, we could, we could just change it to had been previously asked to commit the 95.
And that's where I was headed. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't remembering things incorrectly.
That's correct.
So then I'd like to make a motion that it reflects what Clerk Clausen just suggested.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the CADA letter to say that we agreed to look at the $9,553. In the resolution itself?
No, no.
Right here, okay. All right. Okay, it's in the resolution itself that he wants to amend then. And give me the verbiage that you want used again.
I tried to punt on that and use what Clerk Clausen had said. But I'd be, I'd be fine striking everything after whereas up to Malmell's portion, if that makes sense, I think it would work.
You'd like for it to say Malmell, whereas Malmell's portion was $4,798?
Malmell's portion would be $4,768.
Okay. Did I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend resolution 2014-06 to read in the fifth paragraph, whereas the City of Malmell... Whereas Malmell's portion would be $4,768.
Why are we doing, why are we, excuse me?
Go ahead.
No, we're, we're reducing, or excuse me, we're reducing, why would we amend what was said and why wouldn't it just stay in reserve and whatever?
No, no. What he is objecting to is that we're saying we committed $9,553 and we did not commit it. We did not. We looked at, but we did not commit it.
Okay.
We talked about it in the budget process, but we never committed anything.
Okay, all right, I'm with you. I finally hit me in the head.
And that, that language was taken directly from the letter from the CADA. So I apologize for the miscommunication, but...
That's all right.
That was primarily the source of the information.
Okay.
So they must have believed that the city had committed.
How about the ask?
Whatever helped them get through the day.
Well, they did. If you'll remember, the mayor spoke two weeks ago to the change of executive directors and a slight miscommunication there.
Okay. All right, so the amendment would be, whereas Malmell's portion will be $4,768. And I have a, a motion and a second on that. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Amendment passes. Now then, back to the resolution itself, do I have a motion?
You do.
And a second? Okay. No more questions? All those in favor of resolution 2014-06 say, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Passes. Okay, um, next I have Resolution twenty-fourteen oh seven, uh, amending the general fund budget.
Resolution of the City Council, the City of Marmell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number two thousand fourteen dash oh seven, resolution to amend the two thousand fourteen general fund budget.
Do I have a motion on that?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-fourteen dash oh seven.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-fourteen oh seven. Any questions?
So...
Mosley?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, as I understand this, we, uh, we had, uh, we, we purchased the truck in the two thousand thirteen budget, and we did not get around to finishing it up, uh, for the fire department the way they wanted it, and so we're now just taking money from reserves here to finish this truck.
Mind that was previously approved?
Yes, sir, we have, we appropriated the, the entire amount in two thousand thirteen, and there, there's not been a request for any more than was appropriated then. As a matter of fact, it's the request for a little bit less than what was appropriated in two thousand and thirteen, but the vehicle was not received in time to, to finish the outfitting of it, and this is just a budgetary thing. We can't continue to spend last year's money in, and here we are in February, so that's why we had to request to, to put it in this year's budget to finish the project.
Yeah, it's a small amount of money. If it was, uh, an entire truck or something, I would have liked to have seen it in the budget, but I think this is fine.
Yeah, and this is putting it in the budget.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Alderman Lewis?
It mentions that the, uh, truck will be, uh, outfitted for the two thousand fourteen Dodge Ram for the new training division chief. Um, is my recollection correct that we still have not yet filled that position?
Well, no, that position is being, is currently...
Being sought.
No, it, it has someone in it.
Oh, it does have someone in it, okay. I'm con, I'm confusing it with a...
It's a point, it's a temporary...
Okay.
...fulfillment. It's been in the budget, but it's temporary being filled because Chief Payne is acting as...
Ah, yes.
As, as, uh, acting chief, and so his plate was getting a little full, so...
Gotcha.
Uh, they went ahead and made a temporary appointment to that position to kind of ease his burden.
Understood.
Alderman Kelly?
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Uh, I'd like for the chief to just come up front and explain what's going on.
Okay, very good.
Just to clarify any misconceptions.
We should have done none in the beginning.
Well, I've always heard you don't volunteer unless you have to, so I'm glad to answer any questions you have about any of the projects that we're involved in. Um, this was originally slated and budgeted for the new training chief's position. The additional outfitting, when the truck was delivered, um, to try to, um, save as much money, uh, money as possible, we actually did a different bidding process this time where the, um, camper shell and the, and the warning light package was included in that. We have found that that probably didn't work real well. Um, while it did probably save us some money, now we find ourselves going back and having to add some of the things that were not included. When you say, uh, an NFPA package, sometimes they leave things out because they can meet the minimum standards, which we have to worry about. The, uh, the truck has, uh, multiple purposes to it. Uh, one of them, it will be the, uh, vehicle for the training officer. The, um, bed has been out, is being, um, outfitted with a slide so that he can put air packs and different things like that when we go to the burn bunker, or we go to Conway for one of the training burns, or just recently, we went to the Arkansas Fire Academy with our newest set of volunteers, because they have facilities that we just don't have here. And those are made so you can, uh, slide the tray out, pick those pieces of equipment out and that. It has also been outfitted with the, uh, will be outfitted with the trailer hitches and stuff that can, uh, carry in, uh, to a scene, our air trailer. The air trailer is made so that we can fill safely, because it has a containment facility in case there's a fragmentation of the cylinders that we wear with the air in, the compressed air in there. Um, it is made where it's a safe way to fill those on a scene. The, uh, truck that currently pulls that is a, uh, ton Ford that's twelve years old, so this gives us a redundant backup system in case that, where we did not have that. We would have actually had to go try to find one from one of the other agencies inside to pull that if, if that truck had, had a problem. Um, it gives us that, and it also gives us, cause it is a four-door cab, we, we, like I said, we tried to multitask the truck, just like we try to multitask ourselves. It has four doors on it and the room for, uh, luggage and baggage to be put in that, so that when we do go to an off, out-of-city training site, we can put all the people we need in one vehicle to go in and do that. Um, it, it is a, um, very nice, um, and well-appointed for what it is, but this was a bargain basement type truck. It is, uh, met the state, uh, minimum bid, and that's how the, the truck was acquired, and then we did adds a few features of it to make it where it works within our ci, our city. Um, any questions about that, and that, and that's what that is, just the rest of the stuff. One of the things that the truck, that is the primary for the, uh, trailer, uh, the air trailer right now, um, has a winch. Uh, this one has had an inch, a winch put on it like that. And when we get into these situations where we're having ice, and, and by the way, I'm having the staff up right now while I'm in here, the gentleman that we were talking about, uh, Chief Holmes has been set up into that position right now, is, is, uh, staffing up for the winter weather. We're gonna hit about five o'clock, so y'all get ready for ice in the morning if you hadn't heard that already. So, those are some of the things. Matter of fact, uh, last night, I came in about two o'clock yesterday afternoon and staffed up, and that truck was actually put into operation for the first day. It still likes its striping package, uh, right now, but we utilized that piece of equipment last night so that we would have, uh, four-wheel drive to go in different parts of the city. Um, giving you an idea, that is a cost savings and also a safety measure for the citizens and for yourselves also. Instead of putting a, uh, four-hundred thousand to a five-hundred thousand dollar engine out there to run a medical, we actually switch over, add additional staffing, staff those vehicles, um, so that we can provide medical in the places because of the ice and stuff. If that apparatus was involved in an accident, the damage, uh, to it, to our people, and to anything else or anybody else that was involved in that accident would be minimized compared to, uh, the, a truck, that, an engine or a ladder truck. So, we're, we're utilizing these pieces of equipment to save the citizens money, be able to provide the same level of services in inclement conditions and, and things like that, and yet also be able to make sure that, uh, everything is, is safety as much as we can. Uh, one of my primary goals is always safety, whether it's citizen safety, firefighter safety, or my safety. Um, but anyway, we try really hard to make sure that we're multitasking our equipment as well as ourselves and providing the level of service that this city deserves.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions?
Good.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, Resolution twenty-fourteen oh seven, in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution twenty-fourteen oh eight?
Resolution of the City Council, the City of Marmell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number two thousand fourteen oh eight, resolution to amend the two thousand fourteen general fund budget.
And can you expound on this at all?
Uh, Ms. Thompson is here, probably be, can speak to it a little bit better than I can, pretty please.
Okay, can you?
Pretty please.
Hey, let's see here, we are past the truck, is that correct?
Where to go, Tasha.
Let me get to where you are.
Support him on, uh, yeah.
Yeah, we really gotta have a talk with Mayor Watson about putting all these things on here leaving him.
You know, I was thinking that. He certainly knows when to leave.
Okay, um, what we have is, uh, there's a law on the books that any, that anytime we take monies in for, um, tickets and warrants and things like that, we, uh, take a portion of that, uh, money and put back toward any type of court automation, um, that we're wanting to do. And so, um, up until this point, we've collected the twenty, twenty-something thousand there, so we just need to put it in the budget so that it's available for them to spend when, uh, when necessary. Uh, for instance, last year, they purchased, um, a new server, uh, for the, uh, courts, and so, um, they purchased a couple of computers last year, so, uh, we just have to have the money readily available for them. It's not like we could spend it on anything else, but...
Make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty-fourteen dash zero eight.
Second.
A motion and a second on Resolution twenty-fourteen oh eight. Any other comments? Mosley?
Yes, ma'am. Um, what is a court automatic, automation fund balance? Um, does, does the court maintain their own set of books? Is that what this means?
Um, it's, uh, uh, when you got the governmental funds, um, they all, we all have like separate funds within our bank account, so they have, they don't have their own bank account, but they do have their own fund in our general ledger, and so it, it is separate from the general funds of the city.
Okay, so this, this is not money that's coming from our general, general fund?
No, no, this is money that was collected for that purpose. It just has to be earmarked in the budget for that purpose.
So, basically what you're saying is, is that the court has been saving up money that's, that's really off the books of, of the general fund?
No, I'm not gonna say off the books at all.
I've never said that.
Uh, there, there, uh, um, revenue is taken in, um, for the court autom, automation, and it's put into a revenue account for this purpose.
Into the general fund, into a general fund revenue account?
It is not a general fund re, revenue account. Court automation has its own fund. Um, for instance, we got the one-on-one, the general fund, we got the one-on-two, which is the street fund, we've got the court district funds, that's all in a different fund. So, those are different funds within the city government as a whole.
Right, right, okay. I knew we had the transportation fund, the general fund, the street fund, and I guess I'd forgotten about this fund. Is this something we addressed at budget time?
Uh, no, no, uh, no, it's not, because it's, uh, the, uh, district court judge is the only one who can spend out of this fund and who makes the decisions about what is spent. The city, uh, council is responsible for earmarking the funds for this purpose, but you do not have the power to say what can and cannot be spent. You just have to earmark the funds. That is exactly how the, uh, the act reads.
So, basically, this is money that's coming in, into, okay, we're just overseeing activity in that court fund. It's not actually coming into the general ledger or general fund to be, to be spent on this automation.
Exactly, mhm.
Comes in, goes out.
Okay, I can live with that.
And, and I can tell you, it's...
I just didn't wanna see us submitting the general fund budget here for twenty-six thousand dollars on something that wasn't discussed during budgeting, but it looks like it's all outside of that, so...
Right, right. It's, it, it has to be, by law, it has to be maintained separately.
All right.
And as she referenced, only the district judge can, can authorize expenditures from that amount. That we're just trying to further, so that, so that the council doesn't have to come back later on, basically with another budget amendment to say, the district judge says we're gonna spend it for this, so therefore we're gonna spend it for that. This will allow him to go ahead and move forward with that. Court automation fees, it's a five-to-ten dollar, if someone is on a time-pay agreement for their fine or court costs, for each month that they stretch it out, they pay five to ten dollars for that, um, opportunity. Those are the court automation funds, so it's not necessarily, uh, if someone pleads guilty and pays their entire fine, they won't pay a court automation fee.
Okay.
But that's where it comes from, and, and they, it just has been, this is not, I don't think it's just one year's worth. I think it's several years' worth of that.
Yes, yes.
So, um, it just has been, we're just handling it a little bit differently because it was pointed out that the district judge is the only one who can authorize expenditures from that, and he can only authorize it for certain things that are related to court automation. For instance, it couldn't be used to buy, um, chairs for the courtroom.
Right.
But it can be used for, um, other equipment, um, computer equipment, that sort of thing.
All right, thank you.
And they're still required to use all city purchasing policy and guidelines.
Right.
So, they can't just go and do...
Eighty thousand dollars?
No.
Since we're, uh, kind of examining this thing, perhaps this is a crude way to put it. Someone goes out, they get a DWI, they pay a fee of, uh, let's say twelve hundred dollar fine on that, and, uh, the poor schlum can't pay it all up front, so they put them on the easy payment plan, the automated fees kick in, and bada-bing bada-boom, there's the account that goes in.
Yep, and since the exception, we've collected twenty-six thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Now, we know everything we've ever wanted to know about automation.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Okay, Resolution twenty-fourteen oh eight, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. And now then, we're down to single stream recycle, and I do have, uh, a comment card on single stream. Ms. Bowen, uh, did, did you wanna speak on single stream?
Well, I thought there would be a report.
Uh, the only report is what was in, in the agenda, which just has the, uh, you probably have this.
It's on my garbage can.
Actually, I do only because Bren gave me one.
Okay, this, this is the only report. Uh, it is going to start on February the twenty-fourth, uh, and this will tell you what is, uh, allowable and is not allowable. But you probably know as much about it as I do tonight.
Well, I guess we'll soon see.
My name's Jan Bowen. I live at thirty-eight Yazoo Court. Since this is not an action item, I'm not sure that my expressing support or, or lack thereof matters. I'm strongly in support of any kind of recycling that we can do, and I guess this is closer than we've been, so in that sense, I'm in support of it. I do have several questions. Like I said, I thought there was gonna be an official report and that my questions would be answered. Can I ask questions even though it's not an action item?
If we can't answer them, we'll ask the, the mayor to answer them.
Okay. Um, my first question is, why not glass?
Okay, and I can't tell you that, uh, other than...
I would like to respond to that if it's...
Okay. Alderman Lewis?
Um, one of the reasons that glass was not accepted is, is instead of, um, us having Waste Management do that service, and they take glass in Little Rock and North Little Rock, they allowed us the opportunity to use the Recycle America Murph, which is the collection facility that collects all of the co-mingled recycled goods. Glass is a tricky thing. It's tricky not only to collect, because it can cut some of the, uh, workers that do collect those, but it's also very difficult in that sorting process. Lastly, it has a very low value in terms of what it's worth, because it can only pretty much be made into sand. We would like to have accepted it, but as I understand, as part of our agreement in using that recycling facility, they asked that we not include glass, because frankly, perhaps that wasn't something that they wanted from us. Glass will continue to be accepted at the, uh, recycling center here in Marmell, which is sorted, and, uh, you know, perhaps in the future, maybe it's something we can add, but that's the answer as to why not right now.
Which brings me to another question.
Please.
Where's the Murph? Is it the one in Little Rock? The one run by Waste Management?
Um, well, Waste Management does not run it. It is run by the Regional Recycling Authority.
Well, it's run by the Regional District, yes.
Right, and Waste Management has previously had a contract to take their goods to that facility. Uh, we had hoped that Marmell would have the opportunity to use that facility in the past, so we could keep our recycling in-house. However, Waste Management somewhat had a bit of a stranglehold, if you will, on it for not, lack of a better way to put it, I suppose, and since, uh, there were some, you know, difficulties in our negotiations with them that I understand, uh, we were, re-offered that option again to perhaps use that facility, which was, I think, a positive.
So, it is the facility in Little Rock that it, that we're going to use?
I'm not familiar with the address is, but it's the Recycle America facility. Yes, ma'am. I don't know if it's in North Little Rock or Little Rock. I've never toured it.
Yeah, I thought at one time the mayor had said we were taking it to Conway.
That's what I...
No, that option was explored, um, if we were not allowed to use the Recycle America facility. Um, with Conway, obviously, the distance goes into play, and there were some uncertainties there. Uh, the Regional Recycling District was allowing us to, uh, have a little bit more of a guarantee about taking our goods there, I believe, and so ultimately, that was, I think, where we went.
And it has the same Murph that Waste Management uses?
As far as, yes, ma'am, I believe so.
Yeah, that was fixing to be another question, because you, you brought in another company that...
Right.
This Recycle America, so Waste Management uses their Murph?
Yes, they use that same Murph that we will be participating in.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm still not quite clear on why they won't take glass.
Well, it's, yeah, largely it comes back...
Because they take it from Little Rock and North Little Rock.
It comes back to money, and, uh, they...
I know, I know you don't get anything for it.
Well, they may not get anything for it. We certainly don't get anything for it, but I think that it is a tricky thing in that mix of products, and when they do sort them, it, and causes their costs to go up, and in addition, there's probably, and this sounds bizarre, but every time you send your employees out to go do a pickup on anything, we have this rule in Marmell about we've gotta bundle all of our sticks and everything when we pull them out of the trees. One of the reasons is workers comp. If you have workers that are going and collecting glass, that could somehow factor into the equation. Again, I'm not certain that that's the exact reason, but I'm going off of the answers that Mayor Watson... that Mayor Watson illustrated in his newsletter to us. I've got you giggling, I don't know if I, my responses are soaking in well, I can't tell.
My friend back there, who's being amazingly quiet, wants to know when and where we can get an extra bin.
Okay, I would say right now, if you'll call Public Works tomorrow morning and stop by their center, I think they would be very happy to provide you one.
It's my understanding they are out of the bins and you'll have to get on a waiting list.
Is that right?
We'll be able to get one, hopefully, they're saying, by the end of the month.
We've just ordered some.
And they would deliver it.
Oh, okay. Last question. How is this being funded without any additional income from the customer? Meaning me?
I'm not quite sure how it's being funded, but I am just happy that we are not passing the corporate cost onto the citizens.
Because that was a big issue.
That was one of the things we had hoped for when we started talking about it.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, a big part of it is just, you know, they were picking up paper anyway.
Only newspaper.
Yeah, so that was, you know, the truck coming and the person that's coming, all of that is, we were doing that anyway.
Right.
The city is absorbing the rest of the cost, is all I can tell you.
They're not charging us to tip.
Mr. Mosley?
Oh, they're not.
You're gonna let them do that?
What was that item?
He drifted off.
I was phased out there with that.
The clerk, the clerk Lawson?
I, I, I don't know all the details or how much we hope, I mean, you know, most of this stuff we were tipping anyway in, in our solid waste department, so, you know, we may see some of that savings there, but they're not charging us to tip at the, at the recycling center.
So, I think the short answer of it is, is that we are not taking a huge leap here in terms of what we've already accepted. Sure, there are some additions, but then also, as clerk Lawson indicated, we'll be saving money in what we're not paying in solid waste. So, some of that will be found, some of that, you know, cost will be found out from that as well.
Yeah, I have to tell you, I, I don't know anymore about what he's lined up and what the costs are than you do, because he hadn't really shared them with us yet. He just put out that brochure, and that's all we know at this point. So, we're, we'll probably interrogate him more at the next council, see if he can share more. But he's done a good job.
Okay.
I didn't know any of that.
Alderman Johnson, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm glad she came up and asked y'all, because I've been filling my thing up with all this stuff. I've been, I've been galling for a month, so I came back, I said, "Man, look at this." So, I've been sticking all this stuff in the bucket, so I gotta go home tonight and take it out.
Oh, well, it doesn't start for three more weeks, though.
That's what I mean, yeah, but I've been sticking it...
Oh, you mean you've been putting that stuff in the bucket?
I've put in all this stuff in.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, I've had, I had a month worth, worth of stuff that I've been putting in that same thing.
Oh, oh.
Thank y'all for bringing it up, it was the 24th. They had one of these wrapped around my garbage can when I got home.
Thank you for letting me ask my questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowen.
Thank you. Planning Commissioner Report, do you have that?
Yes. Which was very brief, and I enjoyed that part of it. The Commissioners approved an ordinance, which we did see tonight, to amend the master street plan to eliminate some conflicting language. This is gonna clean up language requiring sidewalks be built on one side of the street in single-family residential areas, and that the sidewalk will be built on both sides of the street in multifamily areas. It was a recommendation to the City Council for this body's approval. And with that, they adjourned after about a five-minute meeting.
Very good, thank you.
I told you that was the one to take.
Alderman's comments? Alderman Mosley?
Yes, I wanted to ask the city clerk, do you, do you still have that email that I sent you for that other FOI? Do you still have that, or do you need me to send that to you again?
I haven't seen tonight's request, but yes, I have that.
You still got it? Okay.
Absolutely.
I think it's gonna be more than that. The request is for more than that.
Yeah, well...
Pardon me?
It looks like the request is for more than that one.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll look at it, and I'll contact you or catch up with you.
That, that one was the only one I read that night, so.
I understand.
Al, if you'll, wait just one second, I'll make a photocopy, and, and you can go ahead.
Okay, sounds good. I have one more item, but I'll let somebody else go next.
Go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to point out, there was a, this, and I'm gonna read this out of the newspaper, and I think that's already public, so. The gentleman that does the editorial on the, more on Maumell, he talked about the traffic. He was basically laying out a wish list for Maumell for 2014. He said, he talked about the traffic, the third entrance, and he, he asked, one of his wishes was that we have no more high-density housing complexes until the traffic situation is resolved. And I think he's got a good wish there. And I would probably, I'm going to ask everybody to think of why we shouldn't perhaps propose a two-year freeze on, on high-density housing.
Do you not realize that the high-density housing is North Little Rock?
Yeah. Oh, it is currently, but there's, there are, there is zoning for high-density housing out there on Couse Massey.
And they're North Little Rock?
No, not necessarily. I think there's some PRD out there, so. So, anyway, I'll, I'll check in.
Okay.
What was that?
But I wouldn't consider that high-density.
Right. The only thing that, that we have on Couse Massey, though, is, is Country Club of Arkansas, and that's PRD.
Okay, there is, there is some out there on, on the Couse Massey that...
No, I was just confirming that Country Club of Arkansas is PRD.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But all of the apartments that are out there are North Little Rock?
Yeah, the, the ones that are out there currently, but there is zoning that would allow apartments in, in Maumell, is that correct?
Only with a variance?
In Maumell?
Uh-huh.
I, sure, I'm sure there is zoning, and that would allow apartments in Maumell.
I can answer that.
What I'm interested in is out there in the Country Club of Arkansas area and out the Couse Massey area.
Well, most of Couse Massey is in North Little Rock. So, the only part of Maumell that's on Couse Massey is about a seven-acre portion, I believe, that's just west of the ballpark. Is that the part you're talking about?
Well, how about the Equestrian Center down there? There's a, there's a zoning sign down there that says zone PRD for apartments. Is that, is that part of Maumell?
And what side of the road you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Right down there at the very end.
On the right-hand side, it's North Little Rock.
It's right at the smack at the end, but...
I'm not sure, we'd have to...
Anyway.
I'm not sure where that...
Anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check that out, but be thinking about that.
I'm gonna tell you right now, I'd oppose it.
Okay, okay, you can oppose it, but the idea is to try to stand up for the residents and make sure they can get out of Maumell until we get the third entrance.
Okay.
That was my point.
Well, I would like to explain this, and going back to when we changed the form of government, it was all over one area that was zoned for multifamily. And finally, lo and behold, it's worth a lot more dollars to the owner. Lo and behold, one guy came along and says, well, you know, I'll pay his price, and I'd make it work. And he couldn't. He went broke. We have, I know for a fact, there is a pre-zoned piece of property, I guess you'd say north, north of Odom going around, they're, they're beginning to develop in there. There's a, supposedly, there's a piece of property that's zoned for education, I think, and a piece of property is zoned for multifamily. Unless you, unless you buy it, and somebody owns it, you got a legal problem if you wanna change it, and, or you wanna stop the ability of someone, and it's gonna be 15 years maybe before someone does it, and everything like that. But Gary, I can't remember his name was, he, Washington, he, he tried to take that first piece of property when we got into battle, and he just, he thought he could make it work, and he could make profit with it, and the price differential did him in, in, I guess.
The, the area town I'm most interested in is out there really, the, where things that will feed that intersection at Couse Massey and...
I'm not sure any of that out there has been zoned yet. I, I could be wrong, we'll probably have to ask the mayor on that. I don't think any of that out there's been zoned.
I'll, I'll check into that, but I think...
Yeah, that'd be worth checking into, because I don't know.
That's all I've got, thank you.
City Attorney's comments? Clark?
I don't believe so.
We have Alderman Johnson's light.
Yeah, one...
There's one other thing that's in the packet, and that's this Ms. Letter that's telling us what our portion of the Medicaid reimbursement will be for the first quarter, I believe, which is 230275. Okay, Alderman Johnson?
One last thing, and I, I just had something to remind me of it, and, and I made this statement several times, but truly, Maumell only has, well, I can say three natural resources. We've got some beautiful mountain tops in our city, we've got a beautiful river, and this one just reminded me the other day, and I cut it out of the paper down in this small